All right. Good evening. Thank you, guys, for being here. It is Tuesday, February 9th at 6:30. We have a quorum in council chambers and one council member online. It's 6:30, and I am calling this meeting to order. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session or called executive session or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please stand, we'll say the pledge to both flags. If you would please remain standing. We are honored to have one of our police chaplains with us tonight. Hardy Overton will be giving us our invocation. Mr. Overton?
To the mayor, city council, and members, let us pray. We come to you, O most heavenly Father, and we ask that you take this assembly and have your grace over it, O mighty God. We want to pray for Bastrop County, our leaders, our essential workers, and our civil service workers, most of all, our schools, and watch over us and place a hedge of protection over us and this meeting, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Mr. Overton. We really appreciate all the work you do with our police force. All right, council, I have a couple of things to tell you before we get started. One, Mr. Peterson, I'm doing this especially for you, for you to know we've got good news beforehand. We will not be having an executive session tonight. So 10A is pulled. It's on the agenda. So if you are hanging out, waiting for 10A, you'll need to come back to the next council meeting. We will not be doing 10A tonight. And Colin, to let you know, because we have the lovely Ms. Hauser with us this evening, I'll be pulling 9D first on the action items. All right, council, we are on item 4A, which is the mayor's report. I have a couple of things to share with you before we get started. The number-one item is there was a letter that TML requested that the mayor sign that was making the request of having direct and flexible fiscal assistance to the local government with the COVID-19. We sent it to the Texas delegation to try to make sure that we had maximum flexibility with the next set of CARES Act. That letter was dated February 1st, and since that was in line with the agenda that we approved, I signed that letter. I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of that. And I also want to make everyone in the audience aware that the Texas Historical Commission is having a Heroes of History: Black Heritage in Texas. It is a free online presentation tomorrow, Wednesday, February 10th at noon. And if you go to the Texas Historical Commission website, you'll be able to register for that. Looks like pretty cool. Black Heritage in Texas. So I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Speaking of being aware of things, it's cold, and it's gonna get colder, and so it's really a good idea. Fortunately, I'm married to someone who is splitting the firewood and stacking it at my house right now, but I would encourage folks to make sure that you take proper precautions. And I will go ahead and speak on behalf of our first responders. Feel free to stay home. If it gets icy, it's really beneficial if you just kind of snuggle in and find you some hot chocolate. So make sure you stay safe, protect your plants and pets and, you know, use your head. You know the right thing to do, but it really is gonna be severely cold for the next several days. The other thing, council, I so hope that you saw the Fox 7 story about Sonia Coate on the storehouse market in Eatery. They started at the farm. They came to the restaurant. It was fabulous. If you missed it, go to Fox 7. It was shown on January 28th, and it was funny. I was at home when I saw it, and I was texting Rebecca, "Go check this out." So it's really cool, neat way to focus on one of our new businesses and how blessed we are to have another great restaurant in our downtown area. So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Okay, Colin, let's go on to the first page. Have to do some bragging. On the left-hand side of the paper, you will, of the slide, sorry, not paper, we, our Bastrop, and we were featured in the Texas Town and City February edition of the TML Monthly Magazine. And it was, started on page 21. It went to page 24. Some really great pictures of our Main Street project, and it is extremely hard to believe that that picture was taking, taken in a week. It'll have been taken a year ago. We had no idea what we were gonna be living through in the next year. So what a difference a year makes. In the center, you see that we had two of our staff. We're featured at the virtual luncheon for the chamber, and hats off to Trey and Ms. Ellis Shirley for the fantastic job that they did. And I participated in that, was really glad to see their presentation. Just below that, you'll see a picture of our newest senator, Sarah Eckhart. I had told you guys that she asked me to participate in Policy Pints. That was Thursday, the 28th. I did that, had a great time, and had an opportunity to brag on our BEDC and the COVID grants. And it's always fun to participate and to get to know our legislators, especially when they're getting ready to vote on things we're interested in. So really appreciate everything that Sarah Eckhart and her office has done for us. On Monday, I went to the library board meeting, but there wasn't really an action picture of the library board meeting. No harm, Bonnie. It was exciting, but I didn't take a picture of the board meeting. And then on the right-hand side, at our last council meeting, I told you that I had made it to the last few minutes of BAMFAM. And I know that I'm short, but I really think Bernard Blake is just really tall. But there, he is solid muscle and just a wonderful, wonderful man, and I enjoyed visiting with him again. All right, that's kind of what I've been doing since January 22nd. On the planned events, the only thing that I will say is that that February 4th meeting got canceled and rescheduled for next week, so I didn't do that. If you jump one more page, Colin. On February 11th, I do plan on attending the Alive After Five Chamber event, monthly event, that's being sponsored by Dreamfinders. And I am also, looks like I'm gonna be participating in an interview with the Country Rewind earlier that day. And the only other thing that's been added to my schedule since I printed this was on February 16th, I've been asked to present the Black History Month proclamation at the BISD school board meeting. So I'll be at the school board meeting. So that is all I had. Councilmember Ennis, what have you got for us this evening?
Madam Mayor, nothing this time.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
I follow Councilmember Ennis's lead. I have nothing either.
Councilmember Rogers?
Well, this is awful. There's three of us with nothing.
Didn't you go to a Main Street board meeting?
That's tomorrow, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
I will be there, though.
All righty. Well, there you go. Main Street tomorrow. Councilmember Peterson?
Ditto, Mayor. Nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Jackson?
Well, I did attend our Parks Board meeting a week or so ago, and it's really, that's really an active board, and I'm so glad to be the councilees onto that board because of my, of course, my interest in parks, and they are doing a bang-up job of doing different activities. However, we just lost one of the staff members from the Parks Department, David Junick, who has gone to Rosenberg where he will become the new Parks and Recreation Director. So shout out to him for his good work. We're gonna really miss him. But he's the second person we've lost that has left and become a Parks and Recreation Director. But he did a bang-up job here, and I know he'll do well in Rosenberg as well. The Parks Board has a lot of interesting and innovative new things that they were discussing, and you'll hear more about that later on. I just want to say, yes, since it is Black History Month, there's a lot of different activities going on, but due to COVID, a lot of them are going to be virtual instead of in-person activities. And as I usually do, I will be getting copies of the proclamation to the different churches so they can have them at their different programs. And the school district, I understand, has already requested one from you, Mayor, and from others, and so that's taken care of. But it's good to get that information out in the community, and I'm proud to continue that tradition. And thank you, Mayor, for taking it to the school board. That's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. We're on 4C, City Manager's Report. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor and council, and thank you, Mr. Jackson, for the mention of Mr. David Junick of our Public Works Department, who worked specifically with Parks management and Parks maintenance issues and did just a terrific job. And it is, I think, kind of a testament to the folks he worked with here in Bastrop. Curtis and Trey and that whole team is a terrific team. Being the Parks Director for the City of Rosenberg is a significant achievement for young David, and we do wish him really well. Thank you. So I'll give you some other personnel updates. And council, I think you know most of this already from prior communication from me. I will point out that Shara Escue is our new Executive Administrative Assistant to CFO Waldron. Shara started just yesterday, and she is filling the position that was recently vacated by Mary Tipton. And we are all going to enjoy working with Shara. She comes with a really strong professional administrative background. She's spent quite a few years working with Dun &amp; Bradstreet. She has absolutely hit the ground running, is anxious to fill in wherever she can. She made that really obvious during her interview, and yeah, the team is real excited to have her on board. You already know about Shirley Ellis, who's been working with us for a while, but officially in the full-time, permanent capacity of building official only for a couple of days now. And we look forward to working with Shirley. She's, her experience and ability to work with people is gonna be really beneficial for us. Nicole Peterson, and council, this is a pretty significant hire. We've been running with a significant amount of vacancies in the planning department for a long time. That team works long hours, and I'm not sure that's gonna end anytime soon, but Nicole will come in and fill a lot of gaps for the team from a planning technician and administrative perspective. And she comes with a lot of really good, on-point experience as well. And Fabiola DeCarvallo is going to be our Director of Engineering and Capital Project Management, and Fabiola will start on March 8th. And I'll mention that and her role a little bit later in the quarterly report. She's gonna fill some really big gaps for us, too, and so we're really excited about these hires. I think the next slide actually gives you a picture of what these folks look like. Nicole's not here just yet, and Fabiola's not here just yet, but they'll be here in the next few weeks. I wanted to let council know of a significant initiative in our library. Thank you, Bonnie, and thank you, Jesse, and our IT Director, for working hard to pull all this together. This isn't rolled out just yet, but it will be in just a few days, and we'll be messaging all of that as it comes up. Ashley and the library department's been working really hard to make this happen as well. This is a really cool app where library patrons can check out library materials from the convenience of their phone and avoid the typical, traditional library stuff checkout process. They can, from their phone, with this mobile app, scan and look at the catalog. They can reserve items. Go ahead and go to the next slide. Our library staff can keep tabs of this real time. You won't be able to return items through the app. You actually have to physically bring the item back and have us see it and touch it to return it. But I've seen this sort of application before, and the patrons really will benefit from this and enjoy using it. So thank you, Jesse, and the library team for making that happen. And of course, good news, it was funded completely through a grant, which we love. The department directors and I have recently finished the process of, on our own time, reading a book. And just last week, Assistant City Manager Gleason facilitated a conversation with all of the department directors, and we did that over lunch last Monday. Start with why. It's, that book has been around for a few years now. It's not, it's not just a new book. It's been around for a while. It has a lot of legs. A lot of people have paid a lot of attention to this book over the last few years, and it does specifically speak to the kind of work we do as a city and the importance of going beyond just the whats and the hows of what we do and try to dig deep into the whys. Again, that is, that can be a scary, but also an inspirational kind of thought process to go through, and I appreciate the team's reaction to Rebecca leading us all through that. A quote from the book that several people called attention to is, "Just because it works doesn't make it right," and that is kind of thematic for that book. Our next book is actually been out longer than that, was written, I think, in the mid-'90s. It's called Leading Without Power. It's my personal all-time favorite management and leadership book. Again, it's old, but I think it's got some lasting truths in it, and I look forward to the department directors reading that book and discussing that in a few months. So on your planning calendar for February 23rd and agenda items we will be bringing to council, I've mentioned this before. We did reschedule this in an attempt to schedule it around. The family that we want to recognize is a recognition of several city employees and one citizen who did save a life at Film Alley several weeks ago, and that is significant and worthy of honor, and we want to treat that the right way. Council, at your previous council meeting, you created the Cultural Arts Commission, and we are accepting applications. I think Ann is keeping council informed of the status of applications for that board, and we're on track for the mayor to make those appointments and for council to confirm those appointments on February 23rd. We will be asking council to approve a contract with an engineering firm to provide engineering services associated with our CDBG HAS MIT applications. The land swap with Calvary Episcopal, council, you did approve that on first reading at your last council meeting. Our error, and we apologize, that should have been on tonight's agenda for second reading. It's not. And again, that just fell through our cracks, and we won't let that happen again. And that will be on the agenda for second reading on February 23rd. And we will hear on February 23rd from Ms. Waldron and our auditor consultant on the annual audit and CAFER, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. I think we've got another slide of February 23rd items. We will hear from Paul Morales, our consultant with Half and Associates, on where we are with the design on Gill's Branch. He always does a really good job in his presentations. That'll be informative. We opened bids yesterday for the dirtwork portion of the skate park, and we plan to bring that to council on February 23rd. Councilmember Rogers asked that council receive a presentation on where TechDOT is with Highway 71 construction, go over the design, go over the schedule. We will be hearing from the TechDOT area engineer, who will be here on the 23rd. And yeah, that'll be really informative. Really appreciate that suggestion. Our financial advisor has advised that we have the opportunity to benefit on our debt service payments from a refunding of a few outstanding bond issuances, and we will ask council to vote on that on the 23rd and give the financial advisor the direction and authority. They need to go ahead and market that and save us some debt service. And it is time for my six-month evaluation as per the employment agreement, and we'll schedule that for closed session on the 23rd. And then on March 9th, I will give council an update on where we are in recreation program as we inch towards April, which is our Phase 2. It will be time to reappoint our presiding judge. A lot of work is happening to select our construction manager at risk for our water plant project. Trey and I participated in a meeting with Freezing Nichols this morning to prepare for a scoping meeting with one particular firm that scored the highest in our selection process. They did very well. That scoring was of consensus. All the people who participated in that scoring had essentially the same rankings. I participated in that scoring as well. So I think all of that is happening as it should. We are anxious to get this done on March 9th. We are at 30% design right now, and we're stopped until we can get the construction manager on board, and we don't want to linger. Council, you'll remember back in December, we had discussion about the possible creation of a public improvement district for the, I think it's 410-acre property off of 969. New Communities was the applicant at that time. That property has now changed hands. That development team has been working with our planning staff over the last several weeks on their concept plan, and they would like for us, for council to consider, again, creating that public improvement district, setting the boundaries for that district on March the 9th. I will say that these discussions we've had with the, this development group have gone really, really well, and they have been responsive to the city's concerns about what our code provisions are for things like the roadway network and wastewater treatment. And so we're feeling positive about all that at this time. And also, on March 9th, we'll ask you to award a Year 3 contract for our street maintenance program. And then we are actually looking at March 23rd. Another contract we're anxious to approve is for the River Loop. And a lot of work's also been going on with our consultant, who is doing the compensation study. That is going very well. We are on schedule. This will be an important discussion for the city council to see where we are in the market with our compensation and benefits, and to the extent we're behind market, just what it will take for us to catch up. And council, that's it for the city manager report.
Council, do you have any questions for the manager? Did you want to mention this?
I was gonna bring that up in the quarterly report.
Okay, excellent. All right, council, we're on the top of page 2, item 4D, a proclamation of the city council, the City of Bastrop, Texas, recognizing February 2021 as Black History Month. Got the proclamation, and it was included in the packet, and I'm gonna hit the highlights. Whereas the origins of Black History Month can be traced to the scholar Dr. Carter G. Woodson, who created the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in 1915, because African-Americans have played a central role in our nation's history, but far too long historians ignored or glossed over their contributions and the injustices that they have served. Whereas in 1926, Dr. Woodson conceived a yearly celebration to help rectify the omission of African-Americans from history books and was made official by presidential designation in 1976. And whereas today, the observance of Black History Month throughout the United States stands as a testament to the success of Woodson's project and an example of how we can work together to make the teaching of history more honest, and whereas the City of Bastrop is proud to honor the history, contributions, and achievements of the Black community locally, nationally, and globally. Whereas Black History Month is a time to look to the future to ensure inclusiveness and equality for all. And whereas the theme of 2021 Black History Month is Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. Now, therefore, I, Connie Schrader, Mayor of the City of Bastrop, do hereby recognize the month of February 2021 as Black History Month. As I mentioned before, please do take the time with the Texas Historical Commission to maybe take a look at that video tomorrow. And again, I'm very pleased that I've been asked once again to go to the school board. I enjoy doing that every year. So Chief Nagy is on deck and very excited. We do not have any work sessions or briefings. We're moving on to item 6A, receive annual racial profiling report from the Bastrop Police Department. Chief Nagy?
Mayor, council, city manager, good evening. Tonight, I am pleased to present the most thorough and robust and transparent racial profiling report the Bastrop Police Department has documented. In 2020, the Bastrop Police Department made about 2,200 traffic stops. The result of those traffic stops was a warning being issued, a citation being issued, a warning and arrest being made, or a citation and arrest being made. As we went through this process, we categorized these in bullet points and compared them to those results I had just mentioned. So we categorized the gender, race, and ethnicity, the reason or location for a stop, the search conducted, did we locate any contraband. Of course, the final result of the traffic stop was an arrest made, and lastly, per T. Cole rules, whether bodily injury occurred during the traffic stop. So I analyzed all of that data I just mentioned, and I used that by percentages. So I'm gonna be pushing quite a bit of data at you this morning. I tried to organize it by columns. So every column has a title. In general, on the left side, you're gonna have the whole numbers. And then on the right side, you're gonna have the percentage of those particular whole numbers within that column and that column only. If we kind of start shifting from column to column, we might actually end up with some errors. So a bit about percentages. We know that if we have higher data points, our reliability is gonna be better, and if we have lower data points, our percentage reliability is lower. So where did our traffic stops occur? The vast majority of our traffic stops occurred on a city street, followed by the state highway. Now, that also may include Chestnut Street. Then we had a few on private property, and then just a couple on our county roads. So was the driver's race and ethnicity known prior to the traffic stop? The vast majority. The answer is no. This is a bird's-eye view of our performance, so we made 2,182 traffic stops, and the far right, broken down by whole number, by race and ethnicity. This is gonna be a little closer, so I use percentages here. The blue is gonna be the percent of stop compared to the orange, which is going to be citations, hard copied citations. The gray will be warnings, and then lastly, the approximate census. So we made 2,182 traffic stops, 949 resulted in citations, and 1,233 resulted in warnings. I broke down gender by race. Overall, we stopped 912 female, and then 1,270 male. So why did our traffic stops occur? The majority were gonna be from moving traffic violations, such as speeding, followed by vehicle traffic violation. That could be a broken tail out or maybe registration. Then we also had some violation of the law. That could be just an example of stolen vehicle or pre-existing knowledge. An example of that is someone leaving a scene of a crime, and we stopped them after that. I broke down those categories by race and ethnicity, so we have our moving traffic violations, our pre-existing knowledge, the violation of law, and then the vehicle traffic violations. So how many searches did we make this year? We made 38 total searches. That's gonna be about 1.74% of all the traffic stops. And then of those searches, we located a contraband 24 times for about 63%. When we did a search, what type of search did we do? A consent search, so that's simply the officer is asking the driver, "May I search your vehicle?" Contraband in plain view. An incident to arrest is when a person is searched upon their arrest. An incident to arrest is when a person is searched upon their arrest. An inventory is when the vehicle is searched upon that arrest. The probable cause? And lastly, no search. When contraband was located, what did we find? The majority was going to be drugs for about 76% of the time, followed by alcohol, other, and then weapons and stolen property. Of those 38 searches, so that 1.75% of the total traffic stops, the types of searches were broken down by race. So once again, we have our consensual searches, our probable cause searches, contraband in plain view, the incident to arrest, the inventory, and then finally to the far right, So of those searches, if we found contraband, did we make an arrest solely based on that contraband? So the 38 searches, we found 25 items of contraband. And then did we make an arrest based on that contraband? And that was going to be a total of four times. So this is the overall arrests that were made. They were violation of a traffic arrest or traffic law, violation of the penal code, did they have an outstanding warrant for their arrest, and lastly, local law or ordinance. And these will be physical arrests. And lastly, if a bodily injury occurs as a result of a traffic stop, we had no accounts. I don't think we even had any minor injury as a result of a traffic stop or during a traffic stop. So counsel, that concludes my presentation. Do we have any questions?
Great job, Chief Nagy. Just a ton of information. Counsel member Ennis?
I'm going, I'm going back to find my question.
All right.
Wonderful job. Thank you very much for all the work. When you have a given warning, did you see, you might have a situation where you gave a warning but made an arrest?
Yes, that's true.
What, I have trouble wrapping my brain around.
So you were stopped for speeding and I give you a warning for speeding, but you also, let's say just for example, had a warrant for your arrest.
Okay.
So that is a warrant and then an arrest.
Okay.
I'm sorry, a warning and then an arrest.
They don't, the arrest doesn't apply to the warning, warning situation.
They're separate.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel member Ennis thought getting a warning was a good thing and he just didn't want it, right?
Absolutely.
Just clarifying things there. Counsel member Rogers?
Fantastic report.
Thank you.
Fabulous. I had a question, when you said about Chestnut, so do you consider Chestnut a city street? I wasn't sure when you said that, or is it the state highway? How do you see?
It will go to the highest category of roadway, so that'll be a state highway.
Okay, I was just curious about that, but still, great report.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yeah, we all think it's Chestnut, but it's state highway loop 150, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Yeah. Great question. Mayor Proton Nelson?
Well, I guess it does have something to do with the report. I really appreciate the community service that you and the department do. I think that goes a long way toward having such a positive report and I wanted to commend and thank you for that.
I appreciate Mayor Proton, thank you.
Counsel member Ennis?
I want to say one more thing. I've been aware that KXAN has been doing this expose on Austin, having not produced this kind of information. I guess that's where they're going. And I am very proud of the fact that we're on top of it and you do such an excellent job.
I appreciate it, sir. Means a lot.
Great point, counsel member Ennis. And isn't it wonderful that we're not saying, here's your first ever presentation, we're used to getting this on an annual basis and it's really great to have the data available. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And love your last picture.
Mayor, may I, may I comment also, please?
Sure.
To the chief. I keep continuing to hear great things with the police department, the way that they're working with the community and with the neighborhoods. And so I just want to commend you for the excellent work you and your staff are doing to continue to have some cohesiveness in the neighborhoods and to get to know the neighbors and things. And so that's been highly discussed by several people and I'm glad to see that we're doing, that you all are doing a great job. And so, thank you.
Thank you, counsel member, I appreciate it.
Thank you, counsel member Jackson. All right, counsel, we're moving on to item 6B. You have a trusty dusty notebook. The quarterly report is in the packet, so if you are watching from home, you have access to the same data. And we're on 6B, receive presentation on the fiscal year 2021 first quarterly report. Unlike the annual racial profiling report, this is an inaugural event. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, mayor. It is an inaugural event. This is our very first, first quarter report and I look forward to presenting it and get counsel's feedback on the information that's provided in it and we'll, we'll respond as we go to your questions and suggestions about how to make this report better. As this slide indicates, there are three basic parts to this report. There's a, there's a financial section, there is a capital improvement projects section, and the section I'll probably spend the most time on this evening is where we document, document and catalog all the things we're doing and plan to be doing to carry out the initiatives of the nine focus areas that counsel established a couple of years ago. So a couple of words about what this, how this report is organized and the kind of information that's, that's in it. And as the mayor indicated, this is our first report and we will build on this information as we go and there will be quarterly updates. And, and so we won't necessarily repeat all of the same messages every, every quarter, but we will look to establish trends. As my old statistics professor said, one data point doesn't create a trend and so as we go, the information will become more meaningful and, and useful. And as appropriate, we'll also provide schedules, especially for capital improvement projects. This inaugural report does establish a baseline schedule for each of our active capital projects. And so those, those schedules won't change, but in future updates, we'll be able to report our progress on keeping those projects on schedule. So today's schedule, the schedule as identified on December 31st will create a baseline.
If you're watching from home, if you go to the packet, we started on page 5. So if you're looking for it, that's, that's where we are.
Thank you, mayor. One of the reasons why this report and the information in it is foundationally important to how we manage the city and how we communicate progress and how we ensure between the city manager and the city council that we're doing the things we ought to do. Again, we're organized around those nine focus areas and, and counsel, the kind of feedback I am most desirous of receiving from you, not necessarily tonight, but, but between meetings and during subsequent quarterly report presentations, are we, are we doing the right thing? Is, is there anything that's not in the report that you think we ought to be doing? Then please let us know that. And importantly, is the information that's being presented here, is it meaningful? Is it helpful? And if not, please, please do, don't hesitate to, to let me know. This is important because in several weeks, counsel, as you know, we will be meeting in a full day council workshop, in a pre-budget planning session. And at that time, you'll get an update on where we are on implementing the conference plan that you adopted a few years ago. We will be presenting a really important fiscal forecast for each of our major operating funds and our, and our debt fund. We will be presenting to you a, a five-year capital plan that will include active and future projects. And of course, on May 14th, we will ask counsel to assess where you think you are on the focus areas and that'll be your opportunity to adjust those focus areas should you find the need to do so. And that's, this, this information that we're presenting in this report and the second quarter, quarter report should be helpful toward all of that. One of the reasons why we do this is because we recognize that not all messages about the city of Bastrop actually come from the city of Bastrop. There are a lot of messages out there that don't necessarily come from us, but under the category of controlling what we can control, this provides foundational information for, for all of the staff and hopefully for counsel as well, that, that is a baseline of good information and can be relied upon to be consistent and true. From a city staff standpoint, a message I consistently send that not just me, not just the department directors, we are all sending messages, not only what we say and what we write, but also in terms of what we do. And it is important that we are all singing from the same sheet music in that regard. And to do otherwise does erode trust. I think we have a good, solid foundation of trust with our community. I think I know from experience how fragile that is and one way we maintain that is making sure we communicate and message well. And, and counsel, I know you can't see that slide, but it is on page, thank you, mayor. I got ahead of myself here. It's on page 21 in, in your packet. We, we've been working and the communication and special events team in particular has been working on the creation of a communication and messaging strategy. And I won't spend a whole lot of time on this and counsel, I appreciate your feedback on this as well. But this, this is also broken down into four categories that speaks to the quality of the messaging we provide, the professionalism that supports all of that. And being professional also connotes the idea that we understand our role, that your city manager understands his role as an administrator and a policy implementer, which is clearly distinct from the city council's role of, of setting and creating policy. That's why we're careful to make sure counsel's not surprised by any of our messages. That's why we're careful about not being advocates, but also making sure we manage the process well. Being intentional speaks to being smart about how we message and look to how our messaging can be complete and efficient. Counsel, I do remember when I was still a candidate, how, for this job, how important that, that was to, to counsel and we haven't forgotten that. We do that in part by employing the, the networks and relationships we've established and hope to bolster and a lot of that was part of the initiative behind the recent reorganization. And of course, foundationally true, we, we maintain our emphasis on staying truthful, which includes being truthful when the truth hurts.
Mr. City Manager, I kind of, I may have confused things. If you have a notebook printed out, it's page 21. If you're following in the packet, that's page 78. So I apologize if I confused folks.
Thank you, mayor. And for the rest of slides, as we get into the guts of the actual report, we'll, we'll refer to a page in the notebook, not, not, not in the agenda packet, but the, for, for example, the financial report begins on page three of your, your notebook. Counsel, I won't spend a whole lot of time on the financial report. You heard a, a very thorough report from CFO Waldron at your last meeting. That report was on the first two months of the fiscal year. We now have gone through December and those, those trends haven't changed. In general, our expenses and revenues are tracking like they need to and hotel motel revenues are, are not. We are significantly behind where we budgeted we would be for this fiscal year. Counsel gave very clear and direct direction to me when you heard that information at your, at your last meeting and we're, we're implementing that direction. Tracy Waldron and I met with representatives of Visit Bastrop just today to collaborate and create some consensus on our assumptions that we need to employ as we create a, a revenue projection for this fiscal year that we think is appropriately conservative and, and we do need to collaborate with Visit Bastrop on that and dive into the details of what is driving these numbers. Of course, it's COVID related, but trying to figure out to what extent that first quarter experience will, will repeat itself, to what extent would traditional seasonal trends that hotel motel revenues follow are repeatable. We are in new territory here and this, it's important that we get this close to right. I will say, counsel, that we should anticipate a several hundred thousand dollar shortfall. I'm, it would not be surprised to see a $500,000 shortfall in hotel motel revenues and we're talking about a $2.3 million total budget, so that's, that's not insignificant. And next will be to, the next thing will be to create some strategies for how we deal with that. And we do have time set up with our, our assets and Visit Bastrop to make sure that I come back to counsel in a few weeks with some good contingencies for how we approach all that. So moving on from the financial data, the capital improvements projects report starts on page nine. And again, what's, what's in your notebook is a list of all active projects, what you'll see in May, we'll add to that some proposed future projects. I will point out that the, the budget information, the appropriate, the appropriation information that's in the report speaks to the appropriations that are limited to this fiscal year. So what you don't necessarily see in this report is, is a budget for an entire project and we do know that capital projects transcend fiscal years. And so that is something that we will build into future reporting and certainly you'll see that in May when we present to you a CIP. The, the focus area discussion starts on page 21 and that's where the communication and messaging strategy that I referred to earlier resides. And counsel, what I'm going to do here for each of the nine focus areas is, is highlight the topics that are in the, that are in the report. And again, what I ask you to think about is to what extent these topics make sense or not for this focus area. And if it's meaningful to you, great. If it's not meaningful to you, let us know. And again, if we're missing something, please point that out as well. I described for you the communication and messaging strategy, which was a product of our newly created communications and special events team and I am, I will say, counsel, I'm pretty proud of that work and I think that will be beneficial to us as we go on. There, in that section are some statistics on the messages we send out, whether that's through our website or social media or more traditional approaches so that we can keep up with that. Also is some narrative updating on the work of the communications team, what we were trying to accomplish with the reorganization and the extent to which we're getting used to those new roles. And I think all of the news there is very positive. And, and from time to time, we list for each of these focus areas initiatives that we really haven't started on yet, but we plan to over the next several weeks and months. And one of those, BTXN is our, is the cable channel that council meetings and P&amp;Z meetings and other city information is broadcast on. We think Channel 10 represents an untapped opportunity for, for messaging and so we will, we are exploring that. Everbridge is a, is a technology that Bastrop County 911 uses and the city of Bastrop has access to, but we haven't fully utilized it yet. Another message I've heard from counsel is the recognition that not everyone we need to communicate with is tied to social media. Everbridge is a subscription service that allows us to send out messages through a lot of different media, phones, phone calls, text messages, emails. And a neat thing about And the neat thing about Everbridge is that we can target the message to a specific geographic area. Right now, if there's a water line break or a service outage, we're not able to send an electronic message specifically to that polygon that represents that street or that block or two blocks. Used this before, it's really, really helpful. And so that's an initiative for us to roll out over the next few months. We do have recurring meetings planned with area property owners and realtors. I think that'll be really beneficial. And we're also kicking around the idea of publishing a podcast that would feature yours truly interviewing city staff members, other people in the community. I think that could be made to be really fun and really interesting. I can envision a podcast where I'm interviewing Jennifer and Vivy about how they've implemented the MyGov system, and let that be a bit of a tutorial on how all that works. I would love to interview Trey on the implementation of the B3 codes, or any number, Chief Nagy on community programs that Mayor Pro Tim Nelson mentioned earlier. I think there's a lot of content out there, and if we do it right, I think that could be really fun and informative. Moving on to our next focus area, and that's community safety, and those pages start on page 26 in your notebooks. Council, I won't drone on too much about a lot of stuff you already know and how our emergency management activities have gone. There's some information in the notebook that's not just about COVID, but the implementation of the COVID plan is in there, too. The first quarter of this fiscal year has been a very significant year, time for police staffing and fire staffing and training. Not at all insignificant that we hired our first six full-time firefighters, which sets the stage for a pretty cool future for fire protection for Bassdrop residents. The police department has had a bit of turnover over the last several months. Chief Nagy and Chief Stefanik have worked really hard to keep those positions filled. And later on in the report, council, we talk about our ability to fill vacancies, and I think we've been keeping up with that really very well. The new fire department equipment has been wonderful, but also, on the other hand, a lot of workload for the fire department to make sure the team is appropriately trained to use that equipment. There are statistics in the report about our efforts to keep our parks safe. That is a real initiative of Mr. Hancock and the parks crews within the public works department, who periodically do inspections of those spaces and that equipment. Code compliance is all about safety. Council, this is clearly an area of a resource need that we need to be thinking through as we move forward, and we speak to that. There are several safety-related grants, like $40 million worth of safety-related grants that we applied for last fall, and we should be hearing about over the next few months. The report includes some detail on that, and there are others, some statistics and trends in the report, things like inspections from the fire marshal. A lot of work goes on there, and some crime statistic trends that go back to last year, which is interesting and informative as well. Our next focus area is economic vitality, and that starts on page 31. Council, you jam a whole lot of interesting stuff in this economic vitality focus area. We talk about tourism, we talk about infrastructure renewal and investment, we talk about planning and development processes, and fostering an inclusive and diverse environment that encourages entrepreneurial ventures. So yeah, a lot of stuff here. The first quarter, another personnel-related area of focus has been the restructuring of positions within the planning department. I mentioned during the city manager report that we filled that planning tech position with Nicole. It has been a long time since the planning staff has been fully staffed, and those vacant positions have been filled, so I think that is cause for celebration. Tremendous amount of work has gone into getting MyGov to where it is now, and there's some future initiatives going on there as well. Something Jerry Pallady within our engineering area works a lot on is making sure that the private development of public improvements that will become the city's responsibility at some point, that that construction process is well inspected, and that we are ready to accept that work for public use. And there's some good information in the report about that. We do floodplain administration here, but we haven't had anyone with that specific role in their job description. And we're going to go from zero to two in just a few weeks here. Allison Land in the planning department is working on that certification, and our new director of project management and engineering will have that as well. That's really important work. It affects our CRS rating, which translates to dollars. How we provide particularly water and wastewater service in the ETJ is an area of significant strategic importance. Council, you heard a little bit about that on January 28th. We speak to that in the report. The report includes what we do to keep our electric system well-maintained. The report includes information on the ins and outs of Main Street, filming activity, and statistics at the convention center. And yes, we do look forward to the end of COVID, so that more people are using that And so, under the category of the economic vitality focus area and what we're hoping to improve upon in the future, there is opportunity for improvement in terms of how the city staff and the EDC staff work together as we work with developers and development in ensuring that our objectives align. Those economic development objectives are really, really important, and we want to make sure that's front and center and not forgotten about when we're meeting with prospective development. I mentioned the filling of the position, the capital planning, and director of engineering and project management. That's the title. That person will be responsible for putting together that five-year capital plan and then reporting progress on that plan, and that's been an important missing piece for several months now. Council, you heard all about where we are with the Sign Code on January 28th and the future initiatives there. We are putting the final touches on user guides for MyGov implementation, but in the meantime, the staff has done a terrific job of helping people get used to that system and work with it, and as time goes on, that is becoming more and more part of how we work. And plan review streamlining, you heard about this on January 28th as well, the work we've done to rethink how the development review committee works. And that's all about being efficient and letting Jennifer and Trey do their jobs. So fiscal responsibility starts on page 39. And I think this is an area of particular strength for the city. We do know where the dollars are, and I think we track those really well, so thank you to that team. We do have the policies in place we need to have. We recently enacted non-resident fees at the library. That's a fiscally responsible thing to do. You'll hear the audit at your next council meeting. We do have a plan for street maintenance. That is a fiscally responsible thing to do. I do think it's time for us to revisit the pavement condition index, and we'll be talking about that in terms of next year's budget. There are some statistics in the report that speak to the work of the utility customer service folks. And grants, grants, grants. We are a very grant-focused organization, and council, thank you for your leadership there. And we provide some details on grants we've received and grants we hope to receive on that section of the report. Still talking about fiscal responsibility, I'm very much looking forward to Tracy and I presenting to council in a few weeks a fiscal forecast, and let council react to that information and give us a good direction on what you think our affordability constraints are as we go into developing a fiscal '22 budget. We've had great conversations with the cemetery board about the future of the cemetery. They are appropriately concerned about expanding, maintaining the cemetery's ability to accept new burials as time goes on. We do think we're a couple of years away before we're out of space, but it will probably take us a couple of years to develop additional space, space we already own for the cemetery but hasn't been developed yet. And so Curtis and Tracy and I have been having those conversations with the cemetery board, and this fits, I think, under the fiscal responsibility focus area because we are dealing with limited resources there, and there's probably only so much we can count on from the fees we charge in the future. Manage growth as a focus area starts on page 44. And there's some really interesting statistics in the report, pretty telling about the workload and why Jennifer's here every evening when I leave. And one of the things that Jennifer said on January 28th was that there's a lot of developers out there, I think she said they were kicking the tires. When they stop kicking the tires and they actually start applying for development agreements or whatever that process would be, we're going to be really busy. And so, and the numbers prove that up. The report also includes some summary information on development agreements that are currently in place, and so my little cryptic comment is there's a lot going on, and we've not yet really started. Which speaks to the wisdom, I think, council, of the way we're approaching residential building construction now with that scalable approach we have with the contract with the third-party provider. When we need new building inspection services, they get to provide it, and oh, by the way, we'll be collecting revenues at that time to cover those costs. Another focus area is the multi-mobility focus area. The B3 code speaks to that and the application of that street grid requirement that we've been talking about, and several physical initiatives that we've completed or are underway or will be underway over the next few weeks are on the list. The significant grant application for the extension of Agnes is on that list. And of course, here's where we implement the master transportation plan, and one of the arguments for funding the rehabilitation of the Old Iron Bridge is about being multi-mobile as well. And then, my favorite focus area is the organizational excellence area. That was another priority you guys have let the city manager know all about. And here, again, a particular aspect of the MyGov system is the ability for residents to, in an online, automatic way, let us know what their concerns are. And when those citizens let us know what their concerns are, and it's not through MyGov we've initiated, that we will use the system that way to create that record. There are some statistics on that in the report. There are some good statistics about where we are with filling vacant positions. And council, you remember, it hasn't been that long ago when we were concerned, well, this was before my time, you were concerned about how COVID would impact city revenues, and so we put a hold on filling positions. And since then, and after we've opened the floodgates, that has resulted in a lot of work for Tanya and hiring supervisors. I am really pleased with where we are with the small number of vacancies as of December 31st. There are a couple of important positions still in the police department that need to be filled. Chief Nagy has a plan for that. Your city manager hates vacant positions. That's a wasted resource, and so really do appreciate Tanya's work to get all of that done, and really pleased with the outcome. Other initiatives there are the compensation study that I mentioned earlier. A lot of good work is going on there. I think the reorganization plan is going well. We created three teams, the communication and special events team, and that team is largely responsible for creating the report I'm going over with you tonight. An idea behind each of these teams is to push important work and thinking that I think has traditionally resided with the department directors further into the organization. We sort of forced the development of this report into the guts of the organization, and I think as we get used to that and make that more of the organization's culture, that will be really beneficial for everyone. And I think from what I've heard from the members of that team and the safety team that is developing a safety policy for the city, and we call it the A-team, that stands for the administrative team, that will be looking at any number of administrative procedures that perhaps need to be rethought. The people that are assigned to those teams, all of whom are below the department head level, really appreciate that opportunity, and of course, this very quarterly report. And so, still talking about organizational excellence, here's a list of just stuff we do under that heading, work to make us more efficient, work to be responsive to what's going on, equipment replacement and building maintenance. We do have schedules for all of that, and thank you to Curtis and Trey for building those systems. And council, I do look forward, and I know Chief Rosales looks forward to sometime in the near future showing off the fire station renovation and the extent to which that's been done by volunteer effort. That's a cool story in and of itself. And council, I think you know, when I first got here, I asked all city employees to answer a question for me, what does it mean to be a Bassdrop employee? What I got in response was encouraging and inspiring, and we're going to do something special with that. One of the things we're going to do with that is make it part of the new employee orientation process. I mentioned earlier that we've hired just a boatload of people over the last few months, and I'm not sure if Tanya remembers, but I think it's been like 40 people, which is like a quarter of the entire workforce, are employees who have worked here less time than I have. And we need to make sure that they get off on the right foot, and they know what it means to be a Bassdrop employee, and I think it's a pretty cool mentoring opportunity for the veterans who are here. And another focus area is uniquely Bassdrop, and that starts on page 56. Yes, it is an awfully long report. And here, I just say a word about Bonnie Pearson and the library director. One of the reasons why I thought she would be a great fit for the role is she has a has a particular sense of what it means to be a Bastrop library and how unique that is and special that is. And she has a sense and a heart for that. And here's where we talk about special events. Here's where we talk about where we are with rolling out recreation programs, which was another pretty significant initiative over the first quarter. It's been a busy first quarter, counsel. And I hope that message is conveying. The very fun work we had with the cultural arts working group and the successful outcome that was, we did upgrade the holiday lights this year at council's request. Got lots of great feedback on that. Councilmember Ennis periodically reports on the good work of the Historic Landmark Commission, absolutely connects back to our uniquely Bastrop focus area. What the B-3 code is all about is being uniquely Bastrop. We are working with our assets and stakeholders on future meetings and how we can coordinate events better. And counsel, I think you've probably noticed that there have been several references in my presentation this evening and in the quarterly report about the Old Iron Bridge. You will remember the special significance you placed on funding the Old Iron Bridge in your legislative priorities that you passed a few months ago. And at your seats is a communication piece that we've put together that attempts to succinctly explain why that bridge is special and why it needs to be rehabilitated. We do appreciate your feedback on this as well. And thank you, Rebecca. Thank you, Trey. Thank you, Colin, for working on that. And finally, we have a focus area that's about a unique environment. And here we speak to what we do to maintain our parks. Here's where we speak to the really cool story walk along Fisherman's Park and a very significant grant application for the stream bank, riverbank erosion project that we hope is funded. And yes, counsel, you have nine focus areas. And can I answer any questions?
Good summary. And I, counsel, I assume you're going to spend some time with it. Please feel free to email any questions that you have. Do you have any questions for the city manager tonight or any comments? Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Just under fiscal responsibility, I'd like to see, and I really appreciate the hard work and the application for grants and trying to utilize those funding revenue sources. But I would like for us, if we don't achieve success on a grant, I would like to have some sort of after action to determine why we were not successful in getting those grants. So we can, you know, lessons learned and move forward from there.
Okay.
Other than that, I really appreciate the consistency that you've striven for, to be consistent with our focus areas and the messaging that you're putting out there. I think this is outstanding. And it's certainly, again, I'm going to use the term consistent. I think in our messaging, both as policymakers as well as organizational, are coalescing into a common theme. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Ennis?
In the years I've been on the council, there have been so many times, and I think this applies to all of us sitting on this dice, I wonder what's going on with that? And this takes care of it. And I really, really appreciate the hard work and the hard work of the staff in putting this together because it kind of fills in all the gaps for us.
Excellent point. Thank you so much, councilmember Ennis. City manager, one thing that I thought you might have under the multimodal is carts because of our relationship with carts, with the e-cabs. And we know that we have a request before us for having a station there at Spring and Main. So that might be a future project.
Absolutely.
Because it doesn't look like there's a whole lot of extra time. And I'm sure Ms. Bills says they're kicking the tires and she's trying to make sure she doesn't get run over by said tire. So I will, counsel, to the best of my memory, certainly since I was on council in May of 2017, this absolutely will be the first time planning department is fully staffed, if I'm remembering correctly. So it's outstanding if you look at the amount of work that they're getting done. So, great job. And counsel, let's have a round of applause for the staff that's, if you're on staff, why don't you stand up if you worked on this report? Come on. Yay. It's a huge amount of work. And they also, I think, had to still do all their regular job while they were working on putting this together, too.
Well, it kind of is their regular job.
There you go. And isn't that the great thing about it? Because it's in the report.
Thank you.
Just great, great job.
And mayor, just begging your indulgence.
Please.
Sorry. But I did want to call attention to the poster that's on the wall. That's brand new. And I know you can't read it from here, but it does serve as a reminder of what council's nine focus areas are. And yeah, thank you. And staff does use this room pretty frequently during the workday. And so for the public who visit for council meetings and for the staff who's in here a lot, just seeing what those nine focus areas bolded there is meaningful. So, thank you, Colin, for getting that done.
Yay, Colin. All right. Great, great job. Thanks again, staff, truly. It's just a great document. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, mayor.
All right, we are done with citizen comments. On the consent agenda, counsel, you'll see that we have three items. Is there anyone wishing to pull anything from the consent agenda? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the January 26, 2021 regular meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-14 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the 10th amended bylaws of the Bastrop Economic Development Corporation as attached in Exhibit A and providing an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-15 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving a tri-party agreement regarding future connections in the Colony Project to off-site roadways as attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents and establishing an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Sorry about that. I have a motion to approve from councilmember Ennis and a second from Mayor Pro Tim Nelson. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. The consent agenda stands approved. We are on page three, which for items is actually our last page of the agenda. And Colin, as promised, I'm going to move to item 9D, consider action to approve resolution number R-202116 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, confirming appointment by the mayor to the Main Street Advisory Board as required in Section 3.08 of its charter and establishing an effective date. One of the really cool things that I get to do is make appointments. And one of the really cool things counsel gets to do is confirm those appointments. I cannot say enough great things about Sarah Howser. I am thrilled that she wants to be involved with Main Street. And the recommendation came from the Main Street Board unanimously, which makes it even easier to make the appointment. And councilmember Rogers, I was thinking you might want to make a motion.
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from councilmember Rogers and a second from councilmember Ennis. And Ms. Howser, thank you so much for everything you've done for our community. And thank you for agreeing to serve on our board. Madam Secretary, if you will call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Howser. You're on the Main Street.
Just remember you have a meeting tomorrow.
Well, there you go. Thank you so much. Counsel, I will, I have every intention, councilmember Ennis has worked so hard and is working to get the cultural arts commission, as the city manager mentioned, I'm hoping to do that at the next council meeting. And if we don't have all of them, we will have an action item to get the ones that we do have. And we're doing that as an exception. And then we'll move into our 21 appointments. But want to get that board up and going. All right, counsel, we're going back to the first individual consideration item, which is 9A, consider and adopt on first and final reading ordinance 202102 of an emergency measure ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as the emergency management director in regards to the local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, or safety. Counsel, there is nothing for you to approve tonight, but I have a really quick update. One of the most important things that has happened, I had indicated at our last council meeting that once we had seven days in our trauma service area with hospitalizations below 15%, the additional restrictions would be lifted. The Bastrop County received that letter from Dr. Hellerstadt dated January 30. And it is a fantastic trend. They needed to be below 15% for seven days. And we're now sitting here on February 9. They are still below 15%. And in fact, we're at 10.67%. So really have seen some great things happen in that area. Encourage everyone to remain safe. As you can imagine, and I won't rattle off the numbers, but there are substantially more hospital beds, ICU, and ventilators available when the percentage of folks in the hospital is down as low as it is. There's some craziness. Please do not call me to tell me the numbers are crazy. I know that the numbers are crazy. The confirmed number of cases in Bastrop County jumped to 6,296 because DSHS went back, scrubbed their data, and have added a whole bunch of cases from November, December, and January. So there is just no comparison because they've found a case that hadn't been in, so it got entered as a case, a confirmed case, a recovered case. I mean, so it's an apple and an orange. So there's no point. Usually I like to do a comparison of the last time that we met. But just to give you a perspective, the confirmed number of cases is 6,296, and the recovered number of cases is 6,024. So you're thinking, okay, we're less than 300. The active cases is 1,975. And I, so don't ask me, they're working on it. There is a ton of data. It's DSHS. Numbers that I do know are exactly correct and on time and up to date. And hats off to the folks that volunteer at the call center. They received 61 calls in the last week and have answered a total of 3,754 calls. And that is being done by volunteers. They have frequently asked questions. And they are so good that they get questions about property tax rates. They get questions about the vaccine. They get questions about everything because they've become a good source. And just hats off to Sheila Lowe and the group of volunteers that take care of that. It's, when you're frustrated, it's awesome to have a caring person answer the phone and give you the best information that they can, even if it may not be exactly what you're wanting to hear. Jumping on to the vaccine, 5.2 million doses have been allocated to the state of Texas. 4.1 million doses have been shipped to the state of Texas or in the process of being shipped, maybe on a FedEx truck as we speak. And 3.3 million doses have been given in the state of Texas. One thing of note is we met on January 27, and the amount of doses has doubled in that two-week period in the state. So that, and to speak specifically to Bastrop County, 3,226 people have received one dose, 1,245 people are fully vaccinated, and that is a total of 4,471 people, which is 6.5% of the 1A and 1B, the group of folks. And that also, it's basically everyone over the age of 16. And that's a little bit of a hard number because not everybody who's over the age of 60, who's under the age of 65, has additional conditions that make them 1B eligible. So out of that 68,000, there's a big portion of them that are healthy people, young people, and they are not 1A or 1B. That being said, the hub that has been approved has had four clinics. They've given 3,515 doses. They're doing right about 1,000 doses per day. This week, they are dividing that 1,000 into 500. They're doing 500 in Bastrop and 500 in Elgin. And I talked with Tom Mattis on the phone, and, you know, no good deed goes unpunished. People are happy that there's going to be something in Elgin. Just please don't call me tomorrow. No, that doesn't mean that all the Elgin people jumped to the top of the list. They are still pulling from the same list. So the list, and let's talk about the list. Been a lot of conversations because I know folks are really wanting to know, am I really on that list? Did you remember me? I filled out the survey several weeks ago and I haven't heard anything. I've had exchanged several emails. Folks are trying really hard. And it is my understanding that the answer is coming, and I will get it on Friday. But I am well aware of the fact that folks would like to know that they are for sure on the list. And wouldn't it be great if there was a search engine that would, you know, that, hi, I'm Bill Ennis, and it confirms, oh, Mr. Ennis, you are on our list and you are qualified as a 1B or whatever it is. So they're working on it. They're aware of that. It's a lot of information. So again, Walgreens still will get doses now and then, HEB will get doses now and then, DSHS, nearly any question you can ask, including the ethnicity, the gender, the age of persons in the state of Texas that have gotten the dose, whether it's in, you can look by county. There's a ton of information out there on the website. If you are, if you have registered, thank you for your patience. If you are one of the volunteers that's working the hubs, thank you so much for volunteering. And I do not intend on changing any of the orders. Encourage folks to stay safe. We need more vaccines and fewer cases because I am more than ready to get things back to normal. And I do not think I stand alone in that sense. But I do not have anything for you guys to vote on tonight. Do you have any questions for me? All righty. Moving on to 9B, consider action to approve resolution number R-202112 of the city council of the city of Bastrop, Texas, approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant from the 2021 State Homeland Security Program Terrorism Grant for a regional law enforcement surveillance trailer at a cost of $49,950, the most important words in the entire item, with no matching funds from the city of Bastrop, authorizing the chief of police as the grantee's authorized official, providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Nagy?
Thank you, mayor. So the police department is applying for the homeland security grant. This is a grant that is specifically geared towards terrorism. We are asking for a surveillance trailer. And we have a picture of what the trailer would look like here. And then also one is there. And that can be deployed at any infrastructure site. So maybe the water and wastewater plant, or it could also be deployed at any of our special events. Once again, it's just about $50,000 with no matching funds. And that is it. Any questions?
I move to approve.
Move for approval.
I have a motion to approve from councilmember Rogers, a second from councilmember Jackson. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Chief, the state surveillance trailers, they're available to all the communities, municipalities, and counties in the state, correct?
Not necessarily. I mean, there might be, but we would have to wait in line to get some. So there are a certain amount available. But I don't know if we'd be able to get one just because we asked for one. We might have to wait.
Yeah, but that's my point.
Yes, yes.
There's limitations on availability.
Yes, there's definite limitations.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, councilmember Ennis?
If we're awarded this grant and get it, is your intention to, I noticed that Elgin, Smithville don't have one, county doesn't have one, that we would loan ours out to them or?
Yes, sir. We maintain it. But if they would like to use it, we'll even transport to them and set it up for them.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Thank you, councilmember Ennis. Any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chief Nagy. Feel free to apply for grants that have no matching funds. Feel free to apply for grants that have no matching funds. We like those. Moving on to our last and final action item, 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R-202113 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, to award a grant administration service contract to Grant Works for the preparation of the city's 2021-2022 Texas Community Development Block Grant Application and subsequent administrative services if funded, authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Ms. Waldron?
Hi, good evening. Yes, so, the beginning of this grant process is to actually secure the grant administrator, and the city has followed the procurement procedures and has, we got two submittals, and they were scored, and Grant Works unanimously scored the highest. And so, we're just asking for the approval to go forward with the contract with them.
Council, one of the requirements of the procedure is to have an elected official, and so, that was me. So, I got to review both of those proposals. They were both very well done, but I too scored Grant Works as highest, so I appreciate staff doing the independent reviews, and I just wanted you to know that I had, I too had been a part of the scoring process. Any questions, Council?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Mayor Protim Nelson?
Second.
And a second from Councilwoman Peterson. Is there any further discussion?
Mayor?
Councilmember Ennis?
I see that there was no cost on this. Are we, is that, are we not there yet or what?
Right, so the grant administrator, they will be paid if we are awarded. That's part of the grant is to pay for the grant administrator.
So, it's, once again, it's no money out of our pocket?
Well, the grant could be 75, 25. It's not 100% grant for this type of funding.
It's no direct money out of our pocket. The money that they make comes out of the grant that they get?
It's split, just like all the, the whole grant award is split. Usually, it's a 75, 25.
So, the, so?
So, this will be a part of our fiscal '22 budget process. If we apply for a project, it will be a part of that discussion as far as the match that we will have to bring forward.
So, when it comes back to us to approve the funds for that?
Right.
It will be, okay.
Correct.
Great, thanks.
So, that grant writer, it'll be a part of the matching funds is your point?
Right. It's split, just like the construction and everything else.
Right. So, if there's a matching fund, then their grant fee, it will have that same 25 or 80, 20, or whatever. But there was a fee, a proposed fee that was submitted as a part of the proposals. But again, only if we get the grant.
Okay.
Does that make sense? Cool? Any other questions or comments?
You said there were two different applicants or groups that were asking for the service contract?
That's correct.
Okay, because I wasn't familiar with Grant Works, and I know we've gotten lots of community block development grants before, but has Grant Works done anything for us before?
Not for us, but they have a lot of experience.
And they are also the two Elgin is using right now.
Okay. Okay, I just hadn't heard of them, and I know we've had success in the past with getting lots of community block development grants, so, okay.
Any other questions or comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously, and congratulations to Grant Works. Council, as I mentioned, we do not have a need to go into executive session tonight, which means we have no necessary or appropriate actions to take, which brings us, Councilmember Peterson, to item number 12.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second. I have a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Peterson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. It is 8:05, and by acclamation, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.